It is now 5:00 PM on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. This meeting of the Clean Independent School District Board of Trustees is now called to order. The following trustees are present and participating. Susan Jones, Vice President. Brenda Adams, Secretary. Marvin Rainwater, Board Member. Oliver Mintz, Board Member. Tina Capito, Board Member. Rodney Gilchrist, Board Member. And me, Brett Williams, President and Presiding Officer. For the record, a quorum has been established and is present. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We're also streaming this meeting on our cable channel 17 and on the district's webpage. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak at public forum must submit their signup sheet at this time. Agenda item number one, Public Forum. The Board will now hear comments from those who've signed up to speak. Per Board policy, each public comment is limited to three minutes. I will ask the audience to please refrain from any public outbursts and to maintain decorum. Parents, employees, and citizens are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance process to the fullest extent possible. Related policies are available on the district's website or upon request. Signed up to speak, I have Daniel Hayworth. Welcome.
Thank you. Due to the growth of our school and our mission to make disciples for Jesus in our local community and provide a truly cost-effective option to our military population in our church, which is over 75% military families, we set out to start a school that was a cost-effective, specifically Christian discipleship school. And so that's what we did, and that's what we have. One of the things that we've been searching and praying for over the past three years is a permanent facility for that school. We are at a 200-plus student capacity currently operating out of our church location here in Harker Heights, which is located right off of 439 and 3219. And one of the things that we've been praying specifically for is for an opportunity for us to move to a existing facility to avoid the cost of building from scratch. We've been raising funds specifically for this purpose as it will allow us to say yes to more families that are seeking a Christ-centered education specifically in the community. That's the mission that we set out to accomplish three years ago. It's the one that I believe we've well achieved. The limiting factor for our school currently is just that we have simply run out of space. With the announcing of Eastern Hills Middle School specifically going to be closed, we have a great interest and would like to bring it to the attention of the Board that we would like to be considered as a potential buyer or at least a leaser in the interim as the district tries to figure out what they're going to do with said property. Eastern Hills Middle School is located less than five minutes from our current location, would allow us as a school to continue to expand to serve the students that we believe God has called us to serve, as well as provide an opportunity for the district to do something with a property that is either going to sit idle or eventually be sold off. And so I just wanted to bring that to the consideration of the Board. We really believe that God has called us to help the families in the local area. For private schools, we are a little over 50% of what the typical statewide average is for private school tuition because we know the areas that we live in, we want to serve. We just want to help the families that are in our area that are seeking a Christian-specific education. And we would love to be considered as the Board weighs the potential outcomes of what could happen specifically with this property. And if there's other properties that are within a close enough region that we wouldn't have to move our entire school across town, we would like to be considered for those as well. I thank the Board for your time.
Thank you. As we have no one else signed up for public forum, we are closing public forum. It will now move into agenda item number two, Closed Session. The Board will now convene in closed session for Agenda Item 2A, Discussion of Consideration of Resolution of Votes Cast to Directors for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County for 2026 as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.074. Agenda Item 2P, 2B, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Local Innovation Plan and District of Innovation Amendment Process as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.071. Agenda Item 2C, Consultation with the District's Legal Counsel Regarding Pending Litigation, A Settlement Offer, or Other Issues Confidential Under Attorney-client Privilege as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.071. Agenda Item 2D, Deliberate the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property as Allowed by Texas Government Code 551.072. Agenda Item 2E, Deliberate the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal of a Public Officer or Employee as Allowed by Texas Government Code 551.074. And Agenda Item 2F, Deliberate a Matter Regarding a Public School Student in Which Personally Identifiable Information About the Student Will Necessarily Be Revealed as Allowed by Texas Government Code 551.0821. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the Board reconvenes in the open meeting. The time is now 5:06 PM, and we are in closed session, and we'll go to the Superintendent's Conference Room. The time is now 6:10 PM, and we are reconvening from closed session. No action or voting took place in closed session. No action is needed. We're now going to go back to public forum. This meeting of the Clean Independent School District will resume in accordance with the posted agenda for today's meeting. Anyone who did not sign up for, anyone who did not have the opportunity to speak during public forum at 5:00 PM and wish to speak now must submit their signup sheet at this time. It has been the Board's practice before each regular meeting to have an invocation and pledges of allegiance to the United States Flag and Texas Flag. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Trustee Marvin Rainwater, and the pledges will be led by Secretary Brenda Adams. Please stand.
May we pray. Our Father and our God, we're grateful to be here. We're grateful, Father, for the skills and the talent that you've given each person in the room, and for the love that our parents and teachers have for the kids of KISD. As we face so many challenges, God, we ask for your understanding and for your loving arms and guide us and direct us and help that everything we do may be to the honor and glory of God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, and one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We're also streaming this meeting on our cable channel 17 and on the district's webpage. Agenda item number three, Public Forum. The Board will now hear comments from those who've signed up to speak. Per Board policy, each public comment is limited to three minutes. I will ask the audience to please refrain from any public outbursts and to maintain decorum. Parents, employees, and citizens are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance process to the fullest extent possible. Related policies are available on the district's website or upon request. For the record, we ask that all public forum participants begin by stating their name and the city in which they reside. Once complete, your three minutes will begin. I have two individuals signed up to speak, and first, we have Beth Suter. Welcome.
Hello.
No, you're fine.
I actually think it's Thursday.
Welcome, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. Am I okay to start? Okay. Okay, thank you. My name is Beth Suter, and I am from Harker Heights. My children attend skipchaw. I have been here before, and I hate to come back and nag and nag and nag, so I just want to preface this. If there is a committee of people who talk about special needs stuff, I would love to be a part of that solution. I have ideas. I don't want to just nag. All right, I'm gonna try to make it quick. Yesterday, the ambulance was called to skipchaw because my son, that's nonverbal with intellectual disability, he got his finger stuck in a toy, is what they said when they called me, and they couldn't get it off. And I said, "Okay, did you call? Did you call 911?" They said, "No." I said, "Well, do you think you should?" They said, "Uh, yeah." Okay, so they called 911 after they called me. I got there after it was already off because I was across town, and he's fine. And I asked them, you know, "Hey, guys, I'm really glad that y'all called me first. I appreciate the contact. Just please, if there's ever an emergency like this and you can't help him, I probably can't either, just go on and call 911. And if anybody's mad at you for life-saving or finger-saving, that's their problem. You did the right thing." And then the principal's like, "Well, but that's not what happened." She said they were on the phone simultaneously, and she's doing this. They was calling 911 while they was calling you, and I'm just looking at her because I know that's not what happened. And this has happened multiple times, but thank God I had proof and a nurse with integrity today because that nurse said, "No, ma'am, that's not what happened. What Ms. Suter said is what happened." You know, so then she didn't really know what to say. And I'm like, "Y'all, we've had multiple, multiple issues. I come up here a couple of times, and I've seen that my son is in different clothes," which I understand there's accidents, "but he's peeing through a nighttime diaper how many times a day, and y'all are just washing his clothes here and not telling him when he's supposed to be on a potty schedule. We've got continual IEP problems that, where we've had verbal agreements in the IEP that didn't actually get put in the IEP, and then when I keep asking about it, they're like, "Oh, well, that's not what we said." It is because it's on recording. We record those IEP meetings. And, oh gosh, there was another thing, I'm probably missing it, but the other thing is, y'all, I sat in a six-hour ARD meeting on Friday with a man that I had to leave for assaulting me in front of my children, I got proof of that, who berated me nonstop, talked about things he shouldn't have. This meeting would not be stopped. I didn't even get to eat lunch. I didn't have time to go home to even get a lunch on the 30-minute break they did take. Nothing was resolved. The counselor didn't want to get involved and make a choice, so they said they would table it. I left, expecting it to be rescheduled. They went forward with the meeting and made decisions with my ex-husband, who they told me, and I have proof of that, that they wouldn't even let him fill out the paperwork for that meeting because he only saw him one weekend a month, and they didn't feel like that was enough time to get correct information. But they let him stay and make the final decisions on these legal documents while I'm in a state of fight or flight, trying to navigate not getting triggered by the abuse that's happening in the room. And that can't be in the best interest for my son to work that way, y'all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Deana Vega. Did I pronounce that correctly? Welcome.
Okay, so I'm Deana Vega. I'm from Harker Heights. So I don't have an iPad or any, do I need to hit start or anything? Okay, there goes. I'm calling this afternoon. I have four children. Two of them have already graduated, well, sort of graduated from Colleen ISD. I have two children who are currently enrolled in Colleen ISD. I'm a huge supporter of everything that you guys do, everything that you offer. I definitely feel that KISD has the most to offer students in central Texas area. I work for Leander ISD, and in comparison, KISD just blows us out of the water. With all that, I advocate a lot for Colleen ISD. Community members aren't aware of how much we have and what their children are capable of achieving here. So today, for the last four months, my son has been calling Central Texas College. He was, we thought he graduated with his associate's degree in June. We found out today at 2:31, after four months of trying to get his associate's degree from Central Texas College, that he was accredited short. I don't know how it was missed in the graduation audit from CTC. I don't know how it was missed with the KISD audit of his graduation. I have no idea. We have been calling for four months. My son called July, August. He attempted to speak with Ms. Turner numerous times. Two occasions, he was able to contact her. She indicated that he was fine, that he would get his associates in a few weeks. It's typical. It takes a little bit of time. He emailed, he emailed, no response. September, he says, "Mommy, I don't know what else to do. I tried calling. She won't speak with me because my son wasn't with me." I understood. We called together numerous times. At that point, she's unavailable, she's not able to speak with us. Okay. I called Dr. Hodges. Dr. Hodges, I was never able to communicate with her personally, spoke with her secretary. They would investigate it, they would notify me. This is September. I call again, I call again. I'm calling weekly. I get no response. Today, I finally get ahold of Dr. Hodges. I get with the secretary. She tells me, "Ma'am, I need to get to Dr. Hodges. I'm running out of time, so I'm gonna rush it up." Found out today, he's short of credit. We have two days to get him enrolled in something. Here's the problem. My son has been pending this associate's degree because he secured a position with a firehouse that would pay him a salary because he had his associate's degree. He doesn't have it. Documents are due November 30th. Tonight, he would be here, but he was a finalist for the Negretz Foundation, Firefighter Foundation Scholarship, which will pay his tuition and his fees for this fire academy. My son is now at a loss, and I never once got communication from anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harper, I want to confirm, there's no one else signed up for public comment. So there's no one else signed up for public forum, so we're closing public forum. And prior to going to Agenda Item Number Four, Information Items for Discussion, the Board is going to take a brief five-minute recess. Okay, the time now is 6:26 PM, and we're coming back from a five-minute recess, which started at 6:21 PM. We'll now go to Agenda Item Number Four, Information Items for Discussion. Item Number A, Discussion of Proposed District Academic Calendar for the 2026-2027 School Year. Welcome, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Davis, Board members. Thank you so much. It's that time of year where we're going to bring forth to you a proposed calendar for the next school year. As you know, the Texas Legislature requires us to have 75,600 minutes of instruction per year. We have put together two draft calendars. Let me briefly describe to you our process. First, we ask for volunteers to be on an advisory committee. We put that committee together, and we start holding our first meetings in August, right as we start this school year. And through that process, they put together some drafts. They bring it to various committees, including our senior staff, our cross-divisional meetings. We go back and forth and share ideas, and then come together with a consensus. We take that consensus to two committees. We take it to a site-based decision-making committee made up of representatives from across the districts in various different jobs. We also take it to our DEAC, and they give us feedback on these final calendars. And then our last step is we narrow it down to two drafts, and we put those drafts out for vote, which we have just completed. We have an Option A and B. You should see those in the notes. They're very similar because what we look for is when we get our feedback from our stakeholders, we try to look at what folks really want in a calendar, and we kind of ranked order that. And what we collected from folks is that students and staff want to observe the federal holidays. That was top in mind. They really care about those federal holidays. They want to start after August 1st. They want their full week of break at Thanksgiving. They love the fall break and the spring break, of course, having those weeks off. We did want to shift some beginning-of-the-year August training and spread out those PD days through the year. That's important for our folks in Learning Services to help make sure the instruction is up to par and people are getting the proper training. Folks like to be out before Memorial Day, and then they like that last day of the contract to be for Memorial Day. I do want to say, throughout this whole process, we're constantly in communication with our partners at Fort Hood and always make sure that they're okay with the drafts that we are presenting, and we also like to get feedback from them as well. So we put together the drafts, we put them out for vote. You'll see A, B. They're very similar, and mainly the main difference is a PD day on February 12th or to make that day an instructional day. We did want to add some extra minutes because we know we have bad weather days, and sometimes if you don't have enough cushion there for the minutes, the bad weather can be problematic and forcing us possibly to have to add a day to the calendar. We don't want to do that, so we built in some more instructional time to make sure we have a good enough buffer. And we also talked about increasing some of the professional development. So with that said, with the vote, it was pretty close. It was 49% to 51%. We had about 1,500 votes. I will say that on-campus staff voted 53 to 47 for Option B, and our teachers voted 55 to 45 for Option B. So we are going to propose that we accept Option B. Of course, if you have any questions for me now, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions from trustees? Madam Vice President.
So Option A gives us the extra minutes for our fallback positions if we need them. Is that correct?
Option A gives us more extra minutes. Both calendars give us extra minutes.
I know, but 76,580 versus 76,536.
Correct.
So I would think, for the benefit of our students, that Option A would be more educational opportunities.
If we do Option A, we'll add three minutes to the school day. That is, and that is correct. That's just basic math that you're putting out. We will get a few more minutes if we add. However, they're very close. There's only a difference of about 40 or so minutes between both options.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Capito.
So, and I apologize. So Calendar A and B, it was the committee that made those votes, or we put it out to everyone?
Yes, we put both options out to the, but we had gotten tons of feedback. We had originally started with several different options, and we went back and forth with several committees, got stakeholder feedback from several different groups as we made the calendars, and came to kind of consensus with Option A and Option B.
Because to me, I think I'm favoring Option A and not looking at minutes or any of that is the PD days is six versus five when I hear the leadership staff talking about that they need PD days. We have teachers who are coming into our system who are not certified, or that we have teachers that are coming into the system and we're needing to grow our own with new curriculum and different alternative certifications, that we need the PD days. And so I just want to make sure that we're being supportive of the staff who is wanting to help improve our teachers. I understand people don't always like PD days. I've been a teacher, I've been there, but we know that they are beneficial, and we need to provide that for them. Really, I was hoping to see a few more than just six days because if we have these gaps our schools are needing, and we need to grow these teachers so that we are getting good quality instruction for that Tier One.
I'm sure Dr. Creighton would agree.
Madam Secretary.
So with the additional minutes in Option A and the adding of three minutes to the day, would that impact transportation at all?
Yes, and we, but I don't want, Mr. Heckingberg wants to speak to that.
We would make the adjustments for transportation. Obviously, there would be changes, but in terms of significant impact, no. It would just adjust our bus schedule accordingly for the following year.
Mr. Mintz.
Mr. Baker, so as I read this, it looks like we've, Option A gives us about less than an hour or more over a year?
Yes.
So not a substantial amount, and we've traded an instructional day for a PD day?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other comments from trustees? Mr. Rainwater, anything?
It's my understanding staff owned Option A?
No, staff, well, barely. It was split. It was pretty much split, but Option B in the end won 51 to 49.
Classroom teachers.
The vote, classroom teachers was 55, 45 for Option B.
Any other feedback from trustees? Dr. Davis, my only question would be, and exactly, I just view the calendar as a planning tool for the staff, and I just want to make sure we have a calendar that puts us in the best position to maximize student achievement, you know? And that's whether that's more professional development days or more time in the classroom. I leave that up to you and your team, but I would just hope that the calendar does reflect that. Not doubting that, but that's just my stance on it. It's a decision for staff, in my opinion.
That is certainly at the forefront of our minds, and so please, if y'all need to chime in, certainly, we had some discussions regarding, obviously, there's a few ways you attack PD, professional development. Obviously, you have to front-load teachers. There are certain things teachers need to, you know, partake in professional development prior to receiving children, front-loading, so to speak. And then there's also critically important that we have ongoing staff development. It's not a one-stop shot. You don't train teachers, and then you're abandoning them. You have to continue that throughout the course of a school year to check in, to ensure. And so again, team, if y'all feel like you need to provide more context with that, but I feel confident going forward. Again, we can live with either calendar, I believe, but please, add any context if you may.
Thank you, sir. We would most certainly always favor the opportunity to increase the capacity of our teaching professionals in the classroom, which would be more professional development time. One of the challenges you see in the third quarter of the calendar Option B is that we would be relaunching the spring semester, of course, coming back with Day January 4th and 5th to have an opportunity to support relaunching spring, and we would not have a touch point for formal professional development again until the Friday before spring break. What often happens on the Friday before spring break is that professionals take that day off, so then we would perhaps be going three or four months without having a touch point that we formalized in our calendar for professional development.
Any other feedback from the leadership team on calendar?
You all know I always want more opportunities to build teacher capacity. Option B also gives us an additional day of instruction for students. So we were really torn between, do we provide the additional time with the 168 days on Option B, or do we provide the additional day of professional development for teachers on Option A? As Dr. Davis mentioned, we can work with whichever calendar the Board approves. We too just want to put students and teachers in the best position to learn as much as they possibly can, implement that, give us an opportunity to do the observation and feedback cycle so that we can see that what they've learned has actually been implemented throughout the course of the school year, and then be able to give them that just-in-time feedback to plan what our next professional development sessions would be.
Any other comments from trustees or from staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Well, now I'll go to Item B, which is Discussion of the Clean Independent School District Tax Roll for Tax Year 2025. Welcome, Ms. Vaden.
Thank you. The Texas Property Tax Code requires that the Board of Trustees officially accept the tax roll each year. The appraisal value, which is determined by the Bell County Tax Appraisal District, along with our tax rate that was adopted in August, constitutes the tax roll. The levy was received from the Bell County Appraisal District on October 27th. The freeze-adjusted values from the Appraisal District totaled $12.1 billion, of which we would apply our tax rate. Then there's an additional frozen taxes that are going to be collected at $1.2 million to give us a total levy of $107. two million to give us a total levy of one hundred and seven point seven million. This represents a four point two percent decrease from the prior year's levy, obviously due to the increase in homestead exemption and over sixty-five exemptions. This does not take into account the three-two-one early payment discount that the district offers and it does not take into account any refunds and assumes one hundred percent collection. Since it is a decrease, I do want to remind you that we are funded primarily based on ADA and so fluctuations in this tax appraisal value and the collections do not have a big impact to the district, one way or the other. We will look at the funding period each time and make any adjustments as we do go through the budget process and just would ask that you, at the next meeting, would approve the tax roll of one hundred and seven point seven million.
Questions from trustees? Madam Vice President? Any issues with this being placed on the consent agenda for the November eighteenth meeting? Thank you, Ms. Vaden. We'll now go to C, discussion of House Bill fourteen eighty-one, student use of personal communication devices and implementation of elementary school cellphone lockers. Welcome, Mr. Wells.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Davis, members of the board. Here with you tonight to discuss potential adjustment to our student code of conduct and some of our procedures, especially at the elementary school level where it impacts personal communication devices. Now, a couple of things I want to talk about tonight. I never turn it on, Mr. Harper. A couple of things we want to discuss tonight is a review of the House Bill fourteen eighty-one, just to make sure we're all on the same page. The possible amendment to the student code of conduct show you the lockable personal device cabinets that we would be providing at the elementary schools and then a timeline for implementation. So, as we know, this summer in the eighty-ninth legislative session, House Bill fourteen eighty-one was passed. This is the bill that requires that all public schools prohibit the use of personal communication devices during school hours. We were doing this at the secondary level through the use of the honor pouches, as we know. We did not have a method to prohibit that use at the elementary school. So, what we adopted back in August on page twelve of our student code of conduct states that the elementary school students shall not bring or use a personal device, communication device while at school during the day. The second part of this on page twelve addresses the secondary students and it says secondary students shall not use a personal communication device, including cellphone, smartwatch, while on property and it shall be stored in accordance with the method of storage established by the district. These are both reflected in exhibit B later in the student code of conduct. What we're, what I'm asking tonight is to, is for your consideration, is to simplify and consolidate this into one statement where we say all students shall not use a personal communication device while at school and this, and the device shall be stored in accordance with the method of storage established by the district. So, we've taken the elementary section and the secondary section and combined it into one. In order to do that, we have to develop a system of storing those devices for the elementary school students. And so, what we have here, this is what we would present and propose to change the wording on page fifty-seven, which is in that exhibit B in the student code of conduct towards the end. And what we want to say is that elementary students are not permitted to use personal communication devices such as cellphones or other non-school-issued devices during the school day. All devices must be turned off and placed in the designated storage container in the classroom. Devices will be returned to the students at the end of the school day or when the student is signed out. So, I brought an example of what that storage device looks like. It is a lockable cabinet and it has hole slots inside that are numbered so that the teacher can organize and make sure that the student, right student gets their device back at the end of the school day. It does have a lock on it, so there's keys that come with each cabinet. It does have a handle. It's not mounted in the classroom, so it's, it's kind of low impact on our classroom environments and we're able to then, if we need to, take these with us. At the end of the school day, the teacher then is able to open the cabinet, hand the cellphone back to the elementary student and they can go on their way. We did get some feedback from families after the start of the school year, especially elementary school families, that their students do use these cell devices for tracking, knowing where their students are, going to and from school, when they get off the bus, making sure they know where they are, communicating with them, they call home, especially if the parents aren't there to greet them at the end of the day. So, we do know it is important to have this available to students and let them bring these devices to school, but we have to stay compliant with this House bill and make sure that the students do not have access to them throughout the school day. These cabinets will give us the ability to do that. The timeline for implementation, we would like to come back for final approval on November eighteenth. November nineteenth, then, we would begin distributing the cabinets to the classrooms, to each elementary school, one for each classroom. And then that way, when we come back after the Thanksgiving holiday, we would have the cabinets ready for use and have full implementation across the district.
Questions from Mr. Wells. Madam Vice President.
Mr. Wells, that cabinet, it looks awesome, but it's also, if it's not secured to an established premise in the classroom, it'd be so easy for somebody to walk off with that. I mean, I'm just, I mean, you have thousand-dollar cellphones in there, you know, and you have thirty of them or twenty-two of them. It'd just be easy to be walked off with. So, I would be more comfortable if that cabinet was secured in the classroom somehow to a mounted fixture.
They do have the ability to mount them to the wall. There are cabinets that are available. The purchase price on these cabinets was eighty-five dollars per cabinet. When you step into something like that, it goes to more than a thousand dollars per cabinet.
No, I'm fine with the cabinet. I'd just prefer it be mounted opposed to just sitting on a pedestal.
Sitting on, correct, okay.
It wouldn't get knocked over, it wouldn't, it'd just be secure.
We can look at, look at how we could do that.
Yeah, man, we can easily secure like, like secure chains to secure it, but still be able to remove it from the classroom in any event emergency. That way, we can pick the locker up and move out instead of taking it off the wall. So, there's several ways we can secure it to meet that intent, but still be able to use these lockers.
Madam Capito.
He just addressed it. I was more concerned if we need to evacuate, if it was mounted, how would we get out of the building with those devices and so he just addressed it.
Any other feedback from Mr. Wells from trustees? Mr. Rainwater?
Absolutely. You want to do it now or we can go outside, do a photo shoot outside if you like.
So, everybody's good with this recommendation coming back on the eighteenth. Doesn't call for a consent agenda, but I'm pro-consent agenda, so is anyone having issues with this being on the consent agenda or do we want Mr. Wells to come back and brief it again and show off the due flossy on the eighteenth? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. We appreciate it. We'll now go to D, which is discussion of board policy ELA Local Campus or Program Charter, Charter Partnership. Dr. Osborne, welcome.
I brought my water up here in advance. Good evening, President Williams, Board of Trustees, Dr. Davis. This is the first of three presentations that I have this evening, but fret not. Nope, don't even, yeah, it's okay. I will be brief. This first presentation takes us back one week to our approval of our district optimization plan. As you recall, we are moving forward with the eighteen eighty-two or Texas partnership with an entity we'll determine moving forward, but at Maynor Middle School. One of the first steps, of course, that we must take is the charter authorization process, which requires us to adopt board policy ELA Local. I think I have a slide for you. Okay, thank you so much. As you can see in your board packet, you have a draft of that policy for adoption moving forward. This is an abridged version of the policy so that we don't have to go through it. That policy includes the talking points or areas specific to the purpose of a charter partnership, application and authorization process, performance contracts, accountability and oversight. Of course, that is the key area for the board. That is where you would be stepping in and doing the accountability and oversight for a partner, the partner's autonomy and the necessary intervention if they're not meeting those areas that you outline and then the process for renewal and closure. As you recall, all of that information should sound a lot like my charter authorization process that I disclosed and described on, I believe, October twenty-first. This is the formal policy. I also just want to remind the board, this is a model policy from TEA, so there are very few changes in that policy other than the identifiers for our school district. There was very few that we even had the authority to update or address. Next slide. So, the recommendation from the administration is to move forward with this adoption of the policy in effort to move towards our charter authorization process.
Questions from trustees for Dr. Osborne. What agenda, I'm sorry, Mr. Rainwater?
I'm sorry. I may be one item ahead, but I thought I read somewhere in this that when these guys came in, they took complete control of our budget monies. Was that on the later?
It's not covered today, but there is a section within the policy about performance contracts and within the performance contract, that is when the negotiations and non-negotiables will be outlined. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from trustees? Dr. Osborne, what agenda are we tracking for?
My request would be consent agenda as it's a model policy and had very few changes and has been looked at by TASB. Thank you, Mr. Harper.
For November eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Any issues with this being on the consent agenda for November eighteen? Okay, excuse me, thank you. We'll now go to agenda item E, which is discussion of the Colleen Independent School District Charter Authorizer, Charter Authorizer Mission and Vision Statements. Dr. Osborne?
Again, in line with our charter authorization process, one of the key steps to be eligible for eighteen eighty-two benefits when we apply in March, as well as to set the stage and standard for the charter authorization process, is to establish a clear mission and vision. We looked at a couple of models from TEA as well as looked at iterations in senior staff of best fits for our district. So, these, this is the option that we're bringing forward to adopt as our formal vision and mission statement. I'll go ahead and read the one on the left. Through charter authorization, Colleen ISD envisions a dynamic system of public schools where innovation, quality and opportunity ensure every student thrives in a high-performing learning environment. That would be our vision for charter authorization. And on your right-hand side, that would be our mission. Through charter authorization, Colleen ISD is committed to ensuring all students have access to high-quality innovative schools by approving and holding accountable charter partnerships that elevate learning, expand opportunities and optimize facilities across the district. You'll note in these statements that there is nothing that speaks to turnaround partnerships. I do want to remind the board and remind the public that charter authorization and Texas partnerships can vary in not only the type of partner you establish the partnership with. We talked about nonprofits, we talked about government entities, we talked about institutions of higher education and they can also vary in the type of school that you initiate as a charter. We're looking at a turnaround campus in particular, but we could pursue a charter authorization for a innovative school, a redesign or even a new campus. So, the guidance from TEA is that this policy be very big picture and just establish a why and a how for charter authorization.
Questions from trustees? Dr. Osborne, what's the, what's the request agenda-wise?
The recommendation from the administration is to move forward with this item on the consent agenda on November eighteenth.
Any issues from trustees with November eighteenth consent agenda? Thank you. So, we'll now go to five action items for consideration. A, consideration of turnaround plans for Eastern Hills Middle School, Maynor Middle School and Palo Alto Middle School and public hearing. Dr. Os, Dr. Osborne, but let me state this, I may be saying it earlier, but as a reminder, anyone wishing to speak pertaining to the turnaround plans for Eastern Hills Middle School, Maynor Middle School and Palo Alto Middle School should submit their sign-up sheets at this time. All comments must be related to turnaround plans. Dr. Osborne?
Thank you very much, sir. And as you see, the team that has worked on this is here and they have shifted in the event that you have any questions. You've had an opportunity to take a look at that one hundred twenty-five pages of documentation. I do have just a few slides to condense and talk through what is inside of the turnaround plan and like I said, I will be brief and then we want to make sure that we afford the board an opportunity for questions and provide a little information in advance of any public questions in the hearing. Thank you. Just a quick recap because we know every time that we present this information, we could have first-time public viewers. So, just taking us back in time in 2025, we received three sets of A through F accountability ratings from TEA, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five came out in April and then two sets in August. Based on statute, we have three campuses that were required and are required to develop and/or implement a mandated turnaround plan. Also, just want to remind everyone that a turnaround plan is initiated after two years of unacceptable ratings, so that would be two Fs or three consecutive Ds, that equals one F. We have three campuses. Eastern Hills has two consecutive years of unacceptable ratings and then Palo Alto and Maynor Middle School have three years of unacceptable ratings. Again, this is going to be a very abridged discussion of what's included in the turnaround plans at a very high level. You'll also note at the bottom, it says November twenty-first. That is a week later than we've been discussing for the entirety of the time we've been talking about turnaround plans. It's been November fourteenth. TEA did provide a new deadline. However, we stayed on course. We were completely on track, so with the timeline we had outlined, we just stayed the course and we're prepared to submit in advance of the fourteenth, which was the original Step one in the process of development of the turnaround plan is describing the current reality at the campuses. That included each campus utilizing a new or their old diagnostic for the effective schools framework. We had a campus that had diagnostics done this year and then our other campuses, we had one within the last three years that we were able to utilize with a smaller diagnostic done by the region. With that diagnostic, we're able to determine our current reality at the campuses in five key areas. We've talked about the effective schools framework previously. Area one is strong school leadership. Area two, strategic staffing. Area three, culture. Four, instructional materials. And then area five is effective instruction and supportive teachers in the classroom and their delivery. What you'll notice across all three plans, and I have it outlined here as well, is a common thread. It's common across our campuses and when I say common and current reality, this was beginning of year. I would say that anybody behind me or the campus principals would say that they are beyond what they're describing here because of what's already been implemented. But at their arrival at their campuses as new principals or the onset of the year, there was a lack of leadership clarity and roles and responsibilities. There was a lack of implementation of culture and instructional systems. They've described inconsistency in PLC implementation, use of data, as well as implementation of high-quality instructional materials, which you also know as our curriculum. And last but not least, you'll see noted, noted across the campuses is the impact and negative impact specifically of lack of teacher certifications and high turnover. But the intent of developing the turnaround plan is not to stay in the current reality and that's why I notated that we're beyond that current reality at this point. Every campus leader and their administrative teams helped develop the vision. Every campus leader and their administrative teams help develop the vision or future of what they see being established at their campuses. So a very clear vision of excellence is outlined in the plans. This section in the plan is easily six to 10 pages for each one of the TAPS. I'll go through each area. At Eastern Hills, it's been very important to start a clear and transparent leadership framework where non-negotiables across the team is being addressed and happening. Leadership at Eastern Hills is interested in making sure culture is consistent and, more importantly, aligned with the core values of the campus. They also have a vision for fully implementing PLC coaching, as well as data and feedback, and a specific emphasis on the implementation of our curriculum within classroom instructional delivery. At Maynor, Mr. CS envisions that every leader and every teacher is aligned with their mission, vision, and values. They've done a lot of work under his leadership since the summer to make sure what excellence looks like is well-defined. In addition to that, he is focused on ensuring that his instructional leadership team is calibrated and out there doing continuous feedback and coaching walks. And he has a specific interest in making sure the community, whether it's people in the community, parents, or his staff and students, are engaged in the excellence at the campus. Under the leadership of Christina Harris, Palo Alto, and they are fans of Christina, we went out there this week and talked to the staff post-optimization, and they are they love their principal. They have an interest and focus on instructional leadership systems and feedback, an interest in increasing the accountability for student expectations and culture, and a specific emphasis on consistent use of data in response to what's happening in the classrooms. The TAPS also all require us to outline what are our standardized systems at the district level. That first stop, first base, most important thing is curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Guaranteed and viable curriculum is number one. And I can say in this area, coming into this year, we've enhanced our approach in essentially everything related to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Board of Trustees, you'll recall that one year ago, going into the 24-25 year, there was a transition from autonomy with curriculum to standardized curriculum. So we've taken an additional step from that and updated our curriculum in mathematics with iReady. That was implemented in this school year. And just to make sure that it's clear, what does it mean to be standardized in curriculum? That means that there's a common scope and sequence, specific activities. You could move one student from Classroom A and move that student to Classroom B at a different school, and ideally be within a few days of instruction and the same activities. And because we have mobile kids in our community, this was incredibly important. You'll note there at our campuses with a TAP, in grade 6, 8, we're utilizing iReady for math, SAVUS for RLA. It's also important to note here that both of those curriculums are State Board of Education approved. There is a very rigorous process for approving curriculums to be approved by the SBOE. They have a rubric. They look at the implementation at the teacher level, the access from the parent's side. Also, those curriculums have to be 100% TEES aligned, and there is a very short list of middle school math and RLA curriculum. So we do have two SBOE-approved curriculums in math and RLA. We're utilizing SAVUS in science. In social studies, we're utilizing McGraw-Hill. I want to point out one of the things that comes as information from our curriculum vendors, and that's the recommended number of minutes. In RLA and math, our recommended number of minutes per week is 500. And you'll see on that next line, we're providing about half of that. That is one reason PLC is so important. So the first teach that teachers are providing to kids, the instruction is tight. We make sure that we're supporting that by providing unit-focused documents so teachers know what should be used. There's no additional fluff, no Apple lesson. Here's what you should do with the allocated time that you have, because the recommended time is actually double. This is why we stand by the need for 90-minute blocks in math and reading. We see ourselves moving towards that, but definitely reinforcing that across middle schools in the next school year. When it comes to assessment, we have several district-created assessments that are outlined in the TAP. We have a common structure across K-12, but specific to the DNF campuses, we provide two progress check assessments as well as a benchmark. So that's three assessments per quarter. Those are star-styled assessments. We utilize lead-forward resources. So we pick questions that are aligned with the frequency of the star and the rigor of the star, and the style and type of question of the star in our benchmark assessments. Some of those assessments, teachers can look at in advance, and then some of those assessments, they only get the blueprint, but they don't get the questions. After assessments, we also provide assessment analysis support with our DIS, our Executive Director of... Which way? Which way? There she is. Of Accountability and Assessment goes out to the campuses and supports the leadership teams with disaggregating and making instructional decisions about moving forward. In addition, in our TAP, we've outlined our approach to professional learning communities. We've had PLC in some forums and Colleen ISD up to this point, but I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the board for the dollars allocated for PLC every day in math and reading in middle schools. I think it was to the tune of $1.8 million. And sometimes when I go into a PLC, I say, hey, this costs a lot of money. We got to do the right thing in this environment, not just for kids, but also for the stewardship of the money that's been spent with this time. In the PLCs, we've revised and enhanced the structure and protocol. You'll note there that our math and reading teams meet every single day, 45 minutes. So they're having an opportunity to talk about the lesson, rehearse the lesson, refine and pick and select the questions, disaggregate data, unpack the TEES, ask questions. We don't believe that kids should be practiced on. That's a phrase I use very often in my coaching conversations. PLC is the place to practice, whether it's figuring out what should be in your lesson or how you're going to teach the lesson. I'm certain the question you have is how do we know? Because we're not always there in that PLC. Our PLCs are led by either an expert teacher, so lead teachers at our campuses, either our CIS or CIC, or an administrator. In addition to that, as an executive leadership team, we go out on the CNI side, as well as the school leadership side, and observe and support the facilitation of PLC and provide Coming into the last few sections of the TAP, we were asked to outline our leadership and capacity-building processes for staff at every level. So that includes executive leaders in learning services, as well as our principal supervisors. You'll see there that we've worked with state-approved providers of technical assistance, like Relay Graduate School of Education, or Region 12 has been extremely supportive in the Get Better Faster model. As an executive leadership team of about 15 people, we go out to campuses, do walks in classrooms, observe and support PLC, and then debrief with principals. We also have a weekly meeting in learning services in our many departments, whether it's student services, or school leadership, or CNI. Our principals are also getting monthly coaching with me. I have one-on-ones with each person on my team to drive the metrics and improvement of our systems. Looking at our principals and school leaders, it trickles down. Our principal supervisors meet weekly with their principal cohorts. That does not count all of the phone calls, questions, stop-bys that are also happening. There is a support cadence that's defined by the number or the tier of our campuses. So some campuses get a weekly visit, some campuses bi-weekly, some campuses monthly. But on Mondays, our principal supervisors, every Monday at 2:00, meet with their supervisory group to reinforce where we're going and what needs to improve and where we're shining. That also looks the same way at our campuses. Our campus leaders are conducting instructional leadership teams, operational leadership team meetings, huddles, and then, I'm sorry, monthly professional development in their specific PD areas as their data defines. That PD is provided for teachers. We also include PLC as a capacity-building area that's critical to what we're seeking to do, improve the capacity of teachers through that collaborative space. Teachers get differentiated coaching. So a master teacher or a teacher that's proficient in T-test may be getting a different number of walkthroughs and coaching cycles. Will be getting a different number of walkthroughs and coaching cycles from a struggling or a new teacher. We also support through student support services with CKH and classroom management, student-centered culture, as well as our departments for special programs. I'm going to skip monitoring because we have a lot on monitoring, and I've already talked a little bit about special populations. A question that has been asked is how do we monitor all these things? There are 30 pages of stuff. I think my answer first is we've been monitoring all of these things. When we came into the school year, all the way back to May, when we did our initial trainings, June, when we did our pre-leadership launch, July, we initiated our Leadership Academy, and then support on campuses during our in-service was the lead-up to what you see here. We have weekly, bi-weekly, and quarterly cadences for support, as well as check-ins. And sometimes that is redirection. Sometimes that is feedback or critical conversations. But a lot of times, we're seeking to make sure that we're shining a light on the great things happening, putting principals out in the PLC and showing their exemplars. We're giving out trophies right now for walkthroughs. So we have some systems of structure for cadence of monitoring. I talked about the Monday huddles with principal supervisors. We have coaching dashboards. Every Monday morning, I run a visible scorecard with my team, and we talk about walkthroughs. We talk about campus visits. We talk about PLC. We talk about use of minutes for iXL and iReady. We talk about attendance data. We talk about AIP plans. We talk about what's going on database. So there is a very tight cadence of conversation happening related to best practice and expectations. When you look all the way down to the end, and I just want to talk about this because it's really one of Dr. Davis's anchors for what we're doing, and we already planned it coming into the year, but I think it's been extremely successful in having an eye on what's going on after assessments. And that's our quarterly data review. And it's almost closer to every six weeks. We do it after every two progress checks. We have our staff from our DNF campuses present their data from Progress Check 1 or 2, or Progress Check 2 in the benchmark, and they present that information as well as an action plan. And they have gotten very fancy in their approach to their disaggregation, how they're looking at historical data, how they're looking at standards, grade levels, teachers. We have some very detailed conversations about seeking to improve. Next page is resources. What we've outlined in the TAP includes resources for professional development. I've mentioned Region 12 and the work they're doing with us, and I believe this is our third year of Get Better Faster for one of our cohorts and second for the other. We've also brought in Relay to do training on leveraged leadership, where our big rocks are data-driven instruction, PLC, as well as observation and feedback. That cost that you see there was the cost per campus. And a question we've had previously is, well, are we doing all these great things at all campuses? Yes, those all happen for all school leaders and all administrators. Through cross-divisional, we've come to some consensus about how we might approach stipends at our turnaround schools. You'll see there a stipend of $20,000 for the principal, $10,000 for dean and assistant principals, and a $7,500 stipend for campus instructional specialists and coaches. I know that there are positions that are critical to the work that happens in our turnaround schools. In our first layer of stipend program, so we call this Phase 1, we're looking at that core instructional leadership team. As we move into the next year, we will discuss whether it's counselors, our MCL, our teachers, and aides. Those are stipends to come. So this is Phase 1. On the right-hand side, we've outlined instructional materials. Previously, the board had a question about whether funds would be allocated after the turnaround plan, or did we allocate some things before the turnaround plan? Everything that you see on the list thus far are things being implemented, with the exception of the one at the bottom. That is a turnaround plan-specific implementation. We plan to bring on an entity to support us with manpower and decreasing the ratio in our effort to support kids in their intervention. They'll work with students in our ACC class or in the second half of the double block that we're planning to implement in January. So that is for tutors, and they serve about 30 students per campus in math and reading, and there are four tutors per campus. Okay. Land in the plane. Last but not least, the turnaround plan asked us to outline where are students going after the school actions that were determined through our optimization process. So you see across the top, those look different. Eastern Hills was determined to be a closure. Maynor Middle School will move forward with a Texas partnership, and Palo Alto Middle School will move forward as a closure. You've heard us say on multiple occasions, the plurality of students, which doesn't mean majority, it just means the most. You'll see that Nolan is outlined as the campus getting the plurality of students from Eastern Hills. On the far-right side, Patterson is the campus getting the plurality of students from Palo Alto. And then you have listed there the other campuses that will be receiving students. In the middle, you see kind of a short, abridged definition or overview of the Texas partnership process. On the TAP questionnaire, what it asked us was whether or not we had a operating partner selected, and we don't. And then the other option was, well, what is your plan for selecting a partner? So what you see there is our plan outlined that I've gone over with the board. We've started discussions. We've had an entity come in and speak for the board. And then we've talked about filing the intent to apply for benefits, which I did yesterday, and launching the call for quality schools in December. So just some of the inclusions in the TAP plans at a very high level.
Questions from trustees. Mr. Rainwater.
Dr. Osborne, is Maynor going to pick up 225 students?
Great question. Yes, sir.
Why?
So the enrollment zone changes for Eastern Hills, and when it closes, those kids will be a part of the Maynor enrollment zone.
Wow. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Secretary.
Dr. Osborne, is it possible for us to get those slides?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And my second thing, in the development of your turnaround plans, 125-page-deep, front and back, did you have a team?
Yep. I have an Emmy nominations list here to read.
Okay. Because I was just trying to see-
Yes.
How this all came about.
Great question. So we initiated the plan by, through study. And I have to thank Don Seals, who led the, I guess, educational process around the effective schools framework for our school leaders, as well as their thought partner that they brought to the sessions. I talked about us having Monday and Wednesday workshops in the board for three hours, Monday, Wednesday. We did that for about four or five weeks, getting the school leader portion of the plan written. And that's really the portions you see related to current reality and future vision. The other portions of the plan were done by the individuals behind me, as well as others. So the CNI and A, so Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Team, wrote the portions of the plan related to PLC, related to curriculum instruction and assessment. The school principal supervisors supported the development of all sections, specifically because they see those things in action. So I was talking to one of them today, and they told me that all the way to the end of last week, they were refining and adding in support of their campus because they thought there was more that could be there. Our team from state and federal programs, of course, supported with the identification of instructional materials and how things get paid. Our principals wrote portions, administrators wrote portions. I have to thank the secretaries that participated in this process in ensuring that we had invoices and accurate amounts to put in front of the board and out for the public. Our assessment team, I've spoken- Our assessment team, I've spoken to as well. And I also need to thank the cross-functional team, because we did a lot of stuff in our cross-divisional team, which is about 25 of the executive or above leaders, to really prepare what does it look like to close a school? And those components are included in the TAP as well. And I know this, I mean, I sound like I'm getting an Oscar, and I know I'm gonna forget someone, but it really was a joint effort from the first time that we rolled out the timeline, to everyone doing the things, all the way up to be here today. And that's why we didn't change course when we got an extra week from TEA.
And my last question, when you mentioned the six-week quarterly monitoring, and the teams that come in and present to each other.
Yes.
Are these the DNF campuses, or who are they presenting to?
So, great question. So they present to the executive leadership team and learning services. There's about 14 of us, so that could be ED of our multilingual services, our principal supervisors, our curriculum team, myself. We're the audience, so to speak. We provide the feedback, we ask the questions. The administrative team comes and does that presentation. So the principal leads that discussion with the support of their dean, potentially their CIS or CIC. They bring a trio, sometimes just a duo, and they talk through 25 standard slides. We provided them with a template of how to disaggregate and discuss their data, and then do their action planning. It is really a phenomenal effort to see. It's not an easy lift, but it definitely allows us to have deep conversation about strategic moves in response to data. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from trustees? Madam Capito? We're good down there? And Vice President? Mr. Rainwater, I see you look like you're enthused.
I cannot thank my team enough. I just turned around and said, did I forget anybody? There has been so much work that's gone into this process, and putting it in a document is one thing, but the execution of it and the monitoring of it is another, and that is happening at a really high level, and I'm just very proud of everyone.
Thank you. There be no further questions. This is an action item, trustees. Mr. Gilchrist.
Mr. President, I move to approve the turnaround plans for Eastern Hills Middle School, Maynor Middle School, and Palo Alto Middle School as submitted for submission to the Texas Education Agency, TEA, as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Gilchrist, we have a second by Secretary Adams. Any further discussion by trustees?
I have one thing, yeah.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to make sure our general public, as well as our parents, know that there is a survey that will go live upon approval of the turnaround plans. We do still want the feedback. It must be included in the process, and we're interested very much in our parents' perspective. That will be live on the website as early as tomorrow.
Dr. Osborne, I'm so appreciative for you for having that comment, because what I have to do is, we have to have a public comment section. So look at Mr. Harper and make sure we don't have anyone signed up, but at this time, if anyone has signed up to speak specifically related to the turnaround plans for Eastern Hills Middle School, Maynor Middle School, and Palo Alto Middle School, now would be your time.
Okay. There's no one signed up, so we've got a... Yes, sir. Mr. Rainwater.
May I quickly say, this really isn't a turnaround plan, it's a restructuring, beginning with the instructional materials, through the operational aspects of the building, and then central staff. It's a complete restructuring. Just a lot of work. I'm sorry, as you know.
Any other comments? So there's a motion on the floor, there be no further comments. All those in favor... I'm looking at Trustee Gilchrist, he's giving that look like maybe...
No.
Okay, you're good. I was making sure, you were giving that look like maybe I was forgetting something. So we got a motion by Trustee Gilchrist, we have a second by Secretary Adams, there be no further discussion. All of those in favor, show of hands. We have seven in favor, none in opposition. Thank you, Dr. Osborne, to you and your team for all the hard work on getting this thing across the finish line.
Thank you so much for your support and approval.
Appreciate you. Okay, we'll now go to agenda item number six. Discussion of future board meeting agendas and trustee remarks. We'll change it up a little this week. We're gonna start on to the, my far left, and we're gonna start with Trustee Gilchrist.
I just want to reiterate and thank all of the staff, and Dr. Osborne and her team, and all of you that did that. That's a heavy lift. And congratulations, but now we really still gotta do some more work, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Parents, we do need your feedback. You gotta help us to finish it. We started it, now you gotta help us bring this thing across the finish line. So, thank you.
Mr. Rainwater.
I just would say, in consideration of the tremendous amount of work that we have to do and the challenges we're facing, that we really need some highly skilled, competitive, knowledgeable, strong, experienced administrators at the building level and central level. I say that to say, we need to do everything possible to pay our teachers and our staff as much money as we can, as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, I'm gonna jump over you, then I'll come back and get you... Madam Capito.
I'm just gonna echo Gilchrist, and just thank you to everyone who has been working so hard on this, and please always make sure that you let us know how we can support as a board in providing the resources that you need to be successful.
Trustee Mintz.
Mr. President, just regarding upcoming agendas, I thought I had seen it in a previous draft, but I apparently, I must have misread it. Follow-up on DAP. We are a long time coming for that one. With the transition to a new facility, it might be an opportune time to look at how we consider how that runs. So I'd like to start that discussion sooner rather than later. And my other thing is summer school, and I think we are due to get something on that in the near future, but I just want to make sure those don't fall off the radar.
And we'll just take a quick pause there. Dr. Davis, do you want to address that real quickly?
Sure. With DAP, actually, that was going to, after the optimization board took action last week, that was actually gonna be on this agenda, I believe, and talk to the board officers at a meeting to remove it. As we talk through, we're gonna be discussing the team as it relates to reimagining DAP, if you will. So when we bring that to the board, as it looks to potentially, talking through some potential changes, because we don't want Adam to get too far down the road on certain things, and we reprogram that based on some concerns or what have you, and so that will certainly be forthcoming to the board. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Mintz?
No, sir, thank you.
Madam Secretary.
I have two things. Kudos to everyone involved in the process of getting the plans on paper, and the journey begins. The real hard work begins, and so I want to encourage everyone, our parents, our staff, our students, the community. This is a journey that we've never taken before, and we definitely need to be concerned about our mental capacity, our well-being, how we take care of each other, how we shoulder the work, and how we recognize and honor and celebrate every success you can find. Celebrate it along the way. It is so critical, because it's a heavy lift, as one of the other board members said. In regards to the agenda, I had someone inquire about the STEM program. So they're wanting to know the numbers of students who are gonna be impacted with any of the consolidations, the closures. And so I did say to them that we would bring that up and get more information on our STEM programs. I've not heard anything about it, so...
Madam Vice President.
I'd just like to say that Veterans Day is coming up, and unlike Memorial Day, Veterans Day is to celebrate all those men and women who have served their country honorably, and we have a lot of those members in our staff here at KISD who continue to serve their community through education. So they served their country, now they're serving their community, and I want to say thank you to all of them. Some of them are Purple Heart recipients, and so my hat's off to all of them, and I hope that we celebrate them largely as well when it's Veterans Day on the 6th. So thank you all for your service, again, and again, thank you to everybody who's worked so hard on this program that we're going with this turnaround, or restructuring, or getting better, optimizing our whole district, really. Thank you all very much for the heavy lift.
Madam Vice President, go ahead and tell the trustees, because it's a team here about the agenda. I'll let you just tell them.
So before us, we do have the agendas, and we put it in our packet, so everybody can see what's going on, but we don't want to be remiss in asking you to put your input in, like Mr. Mintz did and Ms. Adams did, if you want something on that agenda. We're not, we're just trying to consolidate the meeting so it goes a little faster. So please review those before you come. If there's something you want to be, you see, just please ask, so the superintendent and the executive committee can work together to try to meet those needs.
Thank you. I just want to say kudos to the staff, everything that staff has done and continues to do. And I'll steal from Dr. Davis, he made a comment to me, he said, just get a, we just need to get some small wins. But I don't want to underscore, every win, whether small or big, is important to the organization. And so let's just keep stacking those up every day. Let's just try a little bit, be a little bit better every day, and don't think that the small thing that you did didn't have a tremendous impact, because every win counts. And so let's just continue to do that. Dr. Davis, anything you've got?
Yeah, always. Again, just thank you to the staff. We know it's a heavy lift, and we will get after it again, and thank you to the board for your unwavering support. And I have no doubt that we will move the needle and get it done. Have an excellent team, and so look forward to, again, taking our rightful place in Region 12. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna keep Madam Capito happy. We're gonna move to agenda item number seven, which is closed session. We do have...
Yes, yes.
Okay. The board... Just want to make sure, because I would get us out of here. The board will now convene in closed session for... Joey Moore, I need to call all of them again, correct? I know you're coaching me along on this. I'll do it to be safe. You're pausing, so I'll do it. The board will now convene in closed session for Agenda Item 7A, consultation with legal counsel regarding superintendent contract, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.071, 551.074. Agenda Item 7B, consultation with legal counsel regarding local innovation plan and District of Innovation Amendment process, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.071. I don't need to call C, do I, Dr. Davis? I'm fixing it, I already know. We've gone over those, so I'm gonna...
I was just gonna say, you can just call the ones, we just need to call...
The ones that...
...the sections that you're gonna go into closed session on. So I do know that, is there one on the first section?
Yes.
There's one on the first section, I mean, 2A, that we didn't get to you.
They'll be the same on both... They're the same on the top and the bottom, with the exception of the superintendent contract.
His office is on the other end.
Brett's up here just butchering the script. We're gonna make it simple. I'm gonna call him, and we'll call him. Agenda Item 7C, consultation with the district's legal counsel regarding pending litigation, a settlement offer, or other issues confidential under attorney-client privilege, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.071. Agenda Item 7D, deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.072. Agenda Item 7E, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.074. And Agenda Item 7F, deliberate a matter regarding a public school student, in which personally identifiable information about the student will necessarily be revealed, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.0821. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting.
You can also read 2A.
Gotcha. Okay. And also, discussion of consideration of resolution of votes to cast directors for the tax appraisal District of Bell County for 2026, 551.074. Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist, because I heard you saying that, and I was like, what is he talking about? So I think we have everything called. Trustees, I apologize. I promise you, I will get this figured out sooner than later, and it won't be so choppy. So the time is now 7:34 PM, and we are in closed session. The time is now 9:38... The time is now 9:38 PM, and we are reconvening from closed session. No action or voting took place in closed session. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 8. Madam Capito.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion by Madam Capito, we have a second by Trustee Gilchrist to adjourn the meeting. All of those in favor, show of hands. We have a unanimous vote of 7-0 to adjourn the meeting at 9:39 PM on November 4th, 2025. Thank you.